Roll call.
Teresa Golden.
Steve Gazwell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Greg Smith.
John Eichman.
Great, and if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And John, you're joining us this evening for Jason, who may be here in a little while, so we'll swap out when Jason arrives.
Understood.
And we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on July 5th and one on July 19th. And I have, let's see, approval of minutes from May 3rd, bear with me. So...
And everybody's here, right?
Michael, Steve, John Cutler, and Teresa, we're all here for that meeting. The rest of us were absent, too. So does one of the four of you want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of May 5th.
I have a motion and a second.
May 3rd, right?
May 3rd?
May 3rd.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And then May 17th, looks like Steve and Michael, you are not here, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 17th, or do we need more time to review them?
No, so moved.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Wow, we're caught up, look at that.
I know, I know you like that when we're caught up, yes. All right. The first item on our agenda tonight is a minor site plan amendment for Arthur'sburg Corner on Route 82. Do we have...
Anybody here?
Yeah, I can, I guess, speak to that.
Mike's actually outside, you want me to go? Just give us one second.
I don't know that he's, I think it was more Brian, but, no, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Okay. There's two items. One is the detention basin behind the plaza, originally called for, I think, like a split-rail type fence around that pond feature.
Right.
And the applicant has requested that they go with something a little less substantial, more like a, what do they call it, like an animal control fence. There are no residences around that pond, you know, it's kind of, pretty much secluded, it's a commercial site, I really don't see, you know, a problem with that. It's the same type of fence that we use around our, you know, rec fields and such, so that's one item. And then the other item is, I think, two propane fuel tanks showed up on the site that weren't anticipated, and they've agreed to provide, you know, a screening as recommended by Michelle and myself.
Were we able to confirm if either of those tanks ended up in the 100-foot right-of-way for the Teconic? I wasn't able to confirm it yet.
No, I mean, they're just within feet of the curb, so...
I know, I thought the curb was pretty close to the right-of-way, though.
We can delve a check down.
Sorry, not the right-of-way, the...
The 100-foot further from the Teconic.
Further from the Teconic, yeah.
No, we did not.
Okay. So I'll see if I can confirm that for you. Yeah, I think we need to confirm that, just to make sure the tanks wouldn't need to either be moved or something else done.
And I'm sorry, there are one other adjustment, and that is behind the plaza, I called for a wood railing to protect vehicles from a swell, a drainage swell, but there is a raised curb there, and there is some distance of flat land before you get to that shale, which is kind of shallow, and they've asked to have that requirement waived, and I think that's reasonable, I really don't think we need a wood rail there. But we will hold them to whatever standard we want with these propane tanks, even if it means relocating one if they have to.
Okay. So the fence change, just tell me again what the name of the new fencing is?
I think it's more like an animal guard, it's like a three-inch square.
It's probably called page wire, maybe, or hog wire, or something like that.
It's maybe a little similar to what they use, like even at Beekman Country Club, to protect the foot golf area from the road.
Can we just say, too, a fencing option acceptable to the...
Town engineer, yeah.
Town engineer, or the building department?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be four-foot high.
That way, if it's something else, it's, as long as it's still acceptable, I don't want...
It has to be approved by this office, yes.
Okay. So that's the fencing change. With regard to the tanks, do we need to defer any kind of motion on those until we know whether or not one of them needs to be moved and what the...
I think the condition would be it has to meet the 100-foot setback requirement, must meet that requirement, and must meet screening satisfaction to town planner.
Did you say it's two tanks, or one? I thought it was one big tank, is it two?
Two tanks. There's two.
There's two, okay.
One is kind of between the two buildings, and then one off to the, to the right, closer to the parkway. And it may be some fence, it may be some natural screening, it's, you know, where we can fit in there.
All right, so tanks on site to meet all setback requirements and screening acceptable to the town planner?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yep.
Okay. Just bear with me.
Yep, and the elimination of that one railing, one wood railing.
All right, and just, and I'm sorry, Scott, I heard you say it, but I was trying to place what you were talking about.
The railing?
The third item, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a wood railing on the backside of the plaza on the high...
Oh, like a mini, it was low, just like a mini guardrail?
Yeah, right, right. But there is a raised curb, concrete curb throughout, and then you have like a flat grass area beyond that, and then you have, you know, a shallow swell, so I mean, it's not like we're really protecting a sharp drop-off.
All right.
And you got the raised curb right there.
Was the raised curb always on the plan?
Yes, it's a raised concrete curb.
Along with the mini guardrail?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a bit, you know...
So we'll just...
It just protects the parking space, you're not going to pull into a parking space doing 30, and, I mean, unlikely you're going to jump that curb.
Hopefully.
And even if you do, you still have another flat area before you get to the swells.
And that's along the rear of the parking lot?
Yes.
Any questions or comments from board members?
And I might note that they did make a change to the handicap ramps that were not shown on the approved plan, but they did go and, you know, replace those ramps that were deficient by code, not by the plan, but by code, so they did do that corrective work already.
Okay. All right, do we need to add that to this motion, or is that...
No, no, I don't believe so.
Already acceptable, okay.
Yeah, I don't believe so, I'm just making, making note of that.
I'm assuming if it's a code requirement, it's, it is what it is.
They were a little unhappy that it wasn't picked up, but bottom line is, they fixed it, so...
Okay, good, good. Any other, again, questions from board members?
I just had one thing on the tanks, they're both 500-gallon size liquid propane, so the two of them combined don't meet the 100, or 1100-gallon bulk storage threshold, so we don't have to worry about that. But I can talk to either Scott or Michelle about, but because they are propane tanks, they have bollards already, but there might be, it might be good just for tampering reasons to enclose them completely inside of a four, six-foot-high fence, just to, there's certain codes about, around tanks of those size that should be looked at.
Okay.
I'll provide some information.
Is that by code, or by some other...
It's more a building and fire code type item that might come into play.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
We'll just put in there that they need to...
I have two...
Any requirements per the building code?
Two 500-gallon tanks on site to meet all setback and building and, building and fire code requirements and screening acceptable to the town planner?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Hola, there's more.
I was going to make you repeat it twice.
Any other questions or comments, any other changes? Okay, so, this is going to take a second, so do I have a motion to accept the fence change, to a fence acceptable to the town engineer from the split-rail fence around the retention pond to the rear of the property?
Yes.
To, to accept the two 500-gallon tanks on site as long as they meet all setback building and fire code requirements and screening, and have screening acceptable to the town planner, and thirdly, to remove the wood guardrail on the rear of the parking lot?
I'm sorry, I do have a question.
Sure.
What is wrong with the fence that's there now?
There is no fence yet.
It hasn't been installed.
Hadn't been installed.
Okay.
So do I have a motion to accept those three changes to the plan as a minor site plan amendment?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is another minor site plan amendment for Villa Negreli on Carpenter Road.
Hi, guys, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Okay, is, you want to tell them? Is a shed, you know, I tried to build a shed a little bigger than what it is right now, which is one already there, and I guess I got to be on the plan board.
You have a 10-by-10 shed there now?
Yes.
Okay, and you're looking to replace it with a, I'm sorry, I have your application here, with a 12-by-28 shed?
Right.
Okay. And will the new shed take up any of your parking spaces, or anything like that?
No.
Okay, I apologize, I don't know, everybody from the board has a copy of the application? Okay. Michelle, have we had a chance to look, does this, does the shed meet all setback requirements, even though it's larger than... And does it require ARB approval because it's, it's a new structure being placed on the property?
It's in a residential district.
I'm asking you, I'm, it's a business use, so...
It's a business use in a residential district, and we're currently, where the code reads, there's technically not, they're not supposed to be looking at properties that are residential districts, and in fact, when the building was renovated, it never went to the ARB originally.
Okay.
So, but that is one of the top items that I'd like to correct in the, in the code, and it's on our priority list to fix that, and to just say in general that all commercial buildings need to go to the ARB.
Okay, but right now, today, that is not currently a requirement. Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? Michelle, anything from your perspective?
As long as he's not taking up any parking.
This is in the same place as the current shed, just a bigger shed.
Exactly.
Takes up more of the patio.
Yeah.
So it's not even a change in impervious surface.
No, just going to build a bigger, that's it.
And the existing shed you're removing from the site, is that the plan, or...
Well, when I put it aside, probably going to move out of there, it's going to...
Well, that's what I'm asking, is if you're...
If it's going to stay on the site, we need to know that, because it's got to be on your site plan. So if you're not going to remove it, we need to know where you're going to place it.
What is it, probably it's going to be too, I'm going to remove it.
He'll have to remove it.
Okay.
Just asking.
Yeah, yeah.
This time, there's no plan for any place for it to go.
Okay.
It'll be removed.
Just know if at some point in the future you need another shed, you just come back to us, let us know what you're doing, so we can make sure your site plan stays up to date. Joe, anything from your...
No.
Scott?
Nothing else.
Tom? Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the removal of the existing shed and replacement of that shed with a 12-by-28 shed as marked on the site plan for, excuse me, for Villa Negreli?
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, thank you.
So you know you're still coming to the building department for a permit for that?
Yeah, yeah, I know that. All right, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Good luck.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a decision for brumation, lot line realignment, and site plan on Donovan Drive.
Okay, I think they're outside the, are they?
I don't think we'd be that quick.
It's kind of like one of those superheroes, just arrived, just when he's...
It's just a little good time.
Anything like a deadline for removal?
July 5th, I think he said, which ends on July 5th.
Oh, so by default, they have to remove it by the end.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we are here tonight relative to brumation, we, everybody's somewhat familiar, I guess, with the project at this point, we had our public hearing, the last time we were here at this, at the forum we opened, we closed. One of the larger items that need to get kind of resolved was the issue of the stormwater plan. I know that Mr. Joe has had a chance to, to evaluate that a little bit, and I think we're okay, and...
You should have a memo back from Joe with a, with a few questions or changes?
I did, I had a couple, a couple informative points, so I think it's something that we can't work through, but I did receive that today, so...
Okay. Joe, do you expect any significant changes to the SWIP that would cause the site plan to change?
No.
Okay. Okay. Do you have ARB approval?
We actually had gotten ARB approval a few months ago, so the answer is yes.
All right, good. I know we sent over, and I apologize if we didn't cover this during the public hearing, Mike, but I know there was some comments from the fire advisory board, I just want to make sure, have you gone over those, and do we have something from you, either in response to those for our record, or can you just run through those right now?
Yeah, we did, in fact, I think, again, a lot of these are effectively what the fire advisory board typically asks for, which are easily enough resolvable in terms of knockbox and so forth. I do want to, I guess, point to an issue, there was a request relative to the building being sprinkled.
Right.
This building is actually made of non-combustible materials, okay? And in fact, in terms of the New York State Building Code, which is really the authority in terms of whether you sprinkle or whether you don't sprinkle, it's not required as per the New York State Building Code requirement. So, while I understand, you know, it makes sense for the fire advisory board to certainly ask for that from a fire protection standpoint, you know, there is, there's authorities beyond us to make determinations relative to whether a building should be sprinkled or not, and in fact, based upon the use and the size and the type of materials of this building, from a code perspective, that's not required.
Okay. And I know, I think you told us at the site there'd be light manufacturing, is that right? There's assembly of, of tanks or brewing equipment, something to that effect?
I think it's, it's more of, it's, it's assembly, there's not a manufacturing line.
Okay.
Basically taking parts in and assembling and then pushing them out.
Any expectation or any significant storage of hazardous chemicals, or anything like that for this?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Okay. Mike, is there anything else in the fire advisory board comments that are not either already addressed by your plan, or, or not changes that you're able to make? Okay, so everything else will be addressed?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? Michelle, anything we need to go over before we review the neg doc?
No.
Okay, Joe? I know you took a look at the SWIP.
Yeah, sure, I mean, it's kind of typical, the SWIP generally, the bulk of the comments wait until after the approval and between the time the plans get signed, so we'll just have to, Mike and I'll just have to go through the comments and get them resolved, but it doesn't seem like they're insurmountable items there.
Okay.
I just had one question, just to refresh my memory, are you utilizing in part the onsite pond, or is everything just contained on this site?
What we're going to do is, we're actually going to contain everything onsite. The logistics of using that pond down the road is, got a little wacky.
That's fine, I just wanted to refresh my memory.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I have a negative declaration dated June 21, 2016, this evening. This was for brumation site plan and lot line realignment. This was an unlisted action in the town of East Fishkill on Donovan Drive. For this negative declaration, we reviewed a short-form EIF and the stormwater pollution prevention plan, and we identified three, sorry, four areas as environmentally relevant during our review of the plans. The first was stormwater quantity control and pollution prevention, the second was traffic and circulation, the third is wetland disturbance, and the last was visual and aesthetics. With regard to the first, stormwater quantity control and pollution prevention, the project plans include a stormwater pollution prevention plan that's developed in such a way that the stormwater rate of runoff from the site will be less than the rate for the site as it currently exists. The applicant proposes to enhance the site with landscaped areas and filtering practices in order to improve stormwater runoff quality and quantity, and as such, no significant impacts from this project is expected. The second item was traffic and circulation. The site will generate some new traffic, although in, in comparison to existing traffic, it's considered not significant. There are approximately 10 to 12 employees at the site, and not a lot, not, not significant additional traffic expected, although occasionally, there may be deliveries by truck. And as a further condition of our approval, the applicant is seeking to reserve some of its designated parking as land-banked parking. As shown on the plan, there will be 13 parking spaces constructed and 10 land-banked spaces. And Michelle, I'm sorry, that, that's sufficient as, as per what was initially required for the building in total?
Correct, I checked the uses in the building with the code, and they exceed the number of spaces that are required with the land bank parking.
Okay. And we are preserving access to the rear parcel through an adjoining lot and 60-foot access strip depicted on the plan, the access strip?
Yes.
Okay. And accordingly, therefore, the project would have no significant adverse impacts on traffic and circulation. The third item we identified was wetland disturbance. While there is a small wetland within this site, the development has been moved far away in excess of the 100-foot adjacent area, and therefore, no wetland or adjacent area disturbance is proposed, and as such, no significant impact in terms of wetland disturbance from the project is expected. And lastly, with regard to visual and aesthetics, the proposed plan is located within an industrial park, although we do recognize that there's a daycare facility adjacent to the site, which is considered a sensitive receptor. Therefore, we've incorporated several features to reduce impacts to neighboring properties. Those include some visual buffering through landscaping, reduced lighting following the LEEDs goals, and Green Globes criteria for light pollution reduction. I'm not sure if I said that correctly, excuse me if I did not.
Say it three times, real quick.
I will not, not right now, anyway. And in addition, the, the light fixtures will be full cutoff and receive shielding in order to further reduce light levels in the direction of the nearby properties. As such, no significant visual impacts from this project are expected. There were no other items identified as environmentally significant as part of our review for this plan, so do I have a motion to approve the negative declaration?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, does someone want to offer the resolution?
Sure.
Thanks, John.
Okay, the resolution of final site plan approval, brumation site plan and lot line realignment, the app, the name of the applicant is KM Unlimited Realty LLC, location Donovan Resolution offered by planning board member John Cutler, whereas the applicant has applied for site plan approval to include a 5,600-square-foot building on a 7.48-acre lot, and whereas the action is considered to be an unlisted action under SEAKER for which coordinated review was not taken, and whereas the planning board held a public hearing on May 3, 2016, and adopted a neg doc declaration on June 21, 2016, whereas the applicant has now submitted a final site plan and further finds that the application meets the town requirements for the final site plan approval, subject to the conditions set forth below. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues final site plan approval for the above project, as represented on a map entitled "Brumation," prepared by Mike Gillespie and Associates dated December 30, 2015, and revised through April 17, 2016. Be it further resolved that this approval is subject to the following conditions, which must be completed before the plan is signed by the planning board chair. Number one, the modifications set forth in the town engineer's letter of...
April 29.
April 29th, the town planner letter of March 24, 2016, and the traffic consultant letter of May 3, 2016. Number two, the plat will contain the written approval of the Duchess County Health Department before it is signed by the chairperson. A final SWIP, number three, a final SWIP approved by the town engineer, and a maintenance agreement approved by the town attorney. Number four, all deeds and easements will be approved by the town attorney. Number five, an inspection fee for the town's review of the proposed improvements will be based on an engineer's estimate as approved by the town engineer. Number six, a landscape and screening maintenance agreement shall be provided in a form that is acceptable to the town attorney. Are there any more?
Pause, pause there for a second, there's a couple updates that we need to make.
Okay.
We caught the April 29th, Joe, for the comment letter?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So item number three, we'd like to update to say, the final SWIP should be updated based on comments from the letter dated June 20th. The final plan should be approved by the town engineer and maintenance agreement approved by the town attorney. Question? Okay.
I have a question, maybe on something else, but that's good.
Okay, let me keep going, then we'll come back.
Yeah.
Okay. Then on number six, if we can say, a landscape and screening plan shall be approved by the town planner, and a maintenance agreement shall be provided in a form that's acceptable to the town attorney. So Michelle, I just want to make sure that we've got the full landscape plan under your purview.
Just to be clear.
Okay, Mike?
I just want to go back relative to the reference, this is obviously subdivision and site plan, the acreage by which, I just want to make sure the acreage was, is correct, because ultimately, this is a 1.35-acre?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what, I just want to make sure I heard that right. In terms of where this building will be, ultimately, once this subdivision is filed, the building will be on a 1.35-acre parcel, is that...
Okay, so Tom, you want to change that?
That's on your plan, so I mean, yeah, that's better.
Do we need to say anything on the first whereas?
So the site, just instead of the seven point four, it should be 1.38, that's on.
Right.
Okay. And we also should add a condition that requires a driveway permit, because it's on a town road.
Yes.
Okay, we'll get to that, just hold on a second, so I'm sorry, it's a 1.3...
Eight.
1.35 acres?
Just in the first, yeah.
Three-five acre.
Acres, okay. The overall parcel is seven and change.
Correct.
But ultimately, the disposition of the final parcel that the building will be will be three blocks.
You're breaking off a 1.3. Okay, okay. I'd like to add a condition, and again, Michelle, a final lighting plan to be approved by the town planner, I know we've got the, the basics, we know the fixtures and everything, but just to make sure that we have the finding, final lighting plan approved. Joe, you mentioned a drainage and pavement installation should be per the town highway code where applicable, do we need to add that as a condition?
Yes, that was something Scott and I talked about trying to include in some of the recent site plans, just to capture some reference to the town highway code, if there's any details in the plan that aren't quite what the town, even though he's not building a town road, we, we just ask that that be like the benchmark to compare some of the construction details against. That's, it says where applicable, meaning that can be, you know, interpreted, given the conditions or the case where it's being used.
Recent development. I don't think much applies to this, but basically, as boilerplate for every project, we just want to make sure we refer, references back to the town highway code, because we had instances where it didn't.
Okay.
But in this particular case, really, I don't think they're crossing a town road for any, with any drainage, per se, but let's say they were doing drainage within the town right-of-way, then the town code has requirements for that type of work, and they have to meet those requirements.
I, I think there actually is part of our proposal, in terms of the SWIP, there is a connection through a town basin, so if it's put as applicable, then that makes sense.
Right.
Okay, so let me read it one more time and make sure it makes sense. Drainage and pavement installation shall be per town highway code where applicable.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any, any other comments or changes, questions? Mike, did we cover, oh, sorry.
I think the building size is, aren't the two stories 9,600 combined?
Right, footprint is 56, but then you were adding, oh, now we're adding, but we have, we do have a partial second floor, so to clarify if you like, that's, that's fine.
5,600 square foot footprint building? With a total of 9,600 square feet?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right?
Yes.
Was it 96 or what did I?
96.
9,600 square.
Okay, and the 5,600 is the correct footprint?
Yes. 5,600 footprint, 9,600 square total.
Okay.
So there's, just from a logistical standpoint, because there's two actions here, what has to happen is, is the subdivision would have to be signed.
Right.
Would have to be filed.
Right.
Which officially creates the parcel, which then allows the site plan to be signed. I don't know how logistical crazy we have to get in a resolution, but just so the board...
That's just done in a...
Just so everybody understands the way it would have to be done.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Tom, is there anything that you want to change in the resolution?
No.
For procedural, okay. Any other comments, questions, suggestions, or changes? Okay, John, you want to finish this out?
Yep, be it further resolved that within five business days of this adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Michael? Sorry, he beat you out by just a little bit, okay? Both as follows, Michael?
Aye.
John Cutler?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
John Eichman?
Aye.
And myself, aye, the motion carries.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is an adjourned public hearing for the Fecory two-lot subdivision on Kensington Drive and Dale Road.
Good evening.
Good evening. Do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing for Fecory?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And Michelle's going to put, you gave her the disk for your plan, so we'll have that up on the board momentarily. Okay, I think the last time we saw this, we were expecting to get revised plans approved by the DEC prior to this meeting. I believe the town planning office received at about 11 o'clock this morning a revised plan. It looked like it might have been signed by the DEC on June 2. I don't know if you made additional changes to it in the meantime, but the plan that I saw didn't have the second house placed on it.
No, well, we did, subsequent to that meeting, we did meet with the DEC and also a member from the town, I don't know if it was the Building Department or the Engineering Department, they came out there and did one final check. They reviewed it, took measurements in the field, and then we prepared a map for them to sign, which they did.
Okay.
And that's what you have.
Okay.
And since then, we've worked on our plan. We haven't submitted it, but I do have a plan. That shows the, you know, shows the second lot as be developed with the driveways, the house, the septic, the well, and all that.
That's not a plan that's in our office at this time?
No.
Okay. We, we need you to get this information into our office in enough time for the board, our professionals, the public, if they would like to come observe them. We need this information ahead of these meetings, so I'm just concerned that...
My understanding at the last meeting was the concern about the validity of the DEC map. So we did meet with the DEC.
Yes, my understanding is there were changes made to the line.
This is a game. Ernie, you went and had the map redone. You don't have the subdivision superimposed on the map that was redone. We have no idea of knowing what changes could have been made by the DEC, if any. Nobody had the chance to look at it, and now you're going to stand here and tell us that you did what you asked? That's a map none of us have seen.
I can't, I can't emphasize enough or be more clear that we need this information ahead of our meetings, because both the board and our professionals review it. We also need it in our planning office for members of the public when we're during, when we're in the midst of a public hearing, to be able to review materials that are submitted. So fortunately, we're going to need to adjourn this again. I had really expected we would have your final plans in the office, but I'm looking and I can't, I can't clearly see the plan that you're showing, but it looks like there's some sort of stripe going down the middle. Can you just say what that is? And if there's a copy of that ma, map on the CD, maybe, Michelle, you could bring up...
That, that was put on inadvertently.
What is that line, the new line?
The heavy line down the middle?
Yeah.
The new, the new property line is right here. This was the old, the old property line, which inadvertently didn't get removed from the plan.
Okay.
So the new line is here, okay?
Okay, so as a result of the, this latest redraw of the, of the flags, you've moved the property line too?
Yes.
Okay.
So the new property line, the new property line, I believe, was over here. We've moved the property line over about 10 or 15 feet. I think this line here is actually the 25-foot offset, and that was inadvertently left on there when it was drawn. I didn't, I didn't pick it up when I, I didn't catch it when I left the office.
Okay.
So the, but the new line is here. We've got 33 feet to the property line from the existing house, 33 feet from the property line to the proposed house. I think the code requires 25 feet.
Okay, come on back to the mic for us, if you don't mind, because I want to make sure everyone's able to hear. All right. I'll speak personally for myself. I, I need the opportunity to just review this, make sure that it meets our expectations and requirements, so...
Yeah, there's a dark line, but that's inadvertently.
Is there anything else that you need to tell us about the changed plan, how you've accommodated the change to the wetland line, just so we can understand that? I understand you've moved the lot line, but what else have you done with the, with the new, the proposed house?
The proposed house essentially has been moved further to the, to the south. It's closer to the property line. I think before we had 30... 40 feet, looks like, right? Forty fi, 40 feet to the property line, now we have 33.
Okay.
So essentially, that line was moved 14 feet.
So where there's, where there's a bump out of the wetland line, are you proposing a, some type of permit to enable you to mow that area? I don't know how a homeowner would accommodate the, I, I saw the, the map this afternoon, that there's kind of a spike in the line, a little jog in the line.
No, I think the DEC wants us, I think we're going to be required, we're going to need a permit for the new well. We're going to need a permit for the new well. That's going to serve the, the existing house.
I'm sorry, hold on a second. Can, can you just hit your other mic there, because we're picking up your conversation? It's hard to hear, Ernie. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, we're going to require a permit for the well that's going to be for the, for the existing house, that's to be drilled in the buffer area.
Of the, of the existing house lot, right?
The existing well is going to serve the proposed house.
Okay.
New well will be drilled for the existing house.
Right.
Therefore, a permit will be required, because that well is located in a buffer area. That, that well is located in a buffer area.
Okay.
So, and part of the... And part of the, part of the, the permit process, part of the permit's going to require, I believe, and I think the town has required it also, is there'll be a split rail fence on the side of the property.
Outlining the wetland buffer?
Well, we could put, no, I don't think normally...
You're required to delineate the wetland buffer.
Okay, well, we can do that.
So that's why I'm asking if you're going to be getting a permit, since it seems like part of your buffer is, it has an odd shape.
We meet, we meet the separation, there'd be no permit for that. The only permit would be for the drill of the well.
Let me just explain again. You need to delineate the wetland buffer line with some type of physical barrier.
Yes.
So the way you've drawn your 100-foot buffer has very sharp, a very sharp angle to it.
Yes.
You wouldn't install fencing that way. So what are you proposing? Are you proposing to receive a permit to allow you to mow on that small triangle that's a bump out?
Right now...
Or are you proposing to move the fence in, so you have a smooth fence line?
We would have a smooth fence line. We would have to show that on our plan.
Okay, we're going to need to see that on the plan. We need to see that on a plan before the next meeting, please.
Now, can I just ask, what, so, so the lines got redrawn. Can you kind of talk to that and any insights into what happened? How did the original line get moved? Or was it wrong?
The original line that was delineated July of last year was here.
Okay.
The DEC then came out earlier this year because, and delineated this area. That was the second trip that the DEC made. Then it was a third, as a result of our meetings, it was a third meeting where the DEC came out, there were actually two members of the DEC that came out, and they came out and they found a little, a little area here, it's probably about 25 feet by 5 foot wide that they claimed as wetland. Okay? And so for that, they added a flag here, and that's what made that. It was never picked up when they did it in July of last year and was picked up when it was delineated.
But wouldn't you normally smooth a buffer line? I mean, I've never seen buffer, a buffer line with a spike like that, unless there's a specific, like, sharp drop off or something like that, so...
They delineate it.
25 feet from, it's the 100 foot public.
Well, they placed flags. Normally, you would do a smoothing of the line if you're connecting flags, right?
I mean, this flag, this flag itself is not a favorite line.
So really, the only change then is that little indentation? In and out. The other border line is...
So that changed the, they added one by what?
The buffer line moved in a couple of places. The, the wetland line and the resulting buffer moved in a couple of places.
So now what's the distance between the buffer and the proposed house?
And I'm going to, Ernie, again, I just, I, we need you to stick close to the mic if you can, so we can hear you.
So do they have the fence around that?
It's required, yeah. Otherwise, you're going to have a homeowner that's mowing the buffer.
So then they're going to have the fence around property that is there?
But what's the distance between the corner of the house, the edge of the house, and the buffer? Is it still only 10 feet, or did it get bigger?
The closest?
Yeah, the closest.
That jut out's going to be close.
Without putting a scale on, it looks like it's about 25 feet. So it actually improved.
It's better.
From the closest buffer point? Including the, the changed point?
Yeah, it's actually the point that's the closest now. Because we've moved everything over, and we've changed the geometric shape of the house as well. And we also took the side offset, it used to be 40 feet, now we made it 33 feet.
I don't have any other questions at this time, because we haven't had any time to study the map, but if there's other questions from the, from board members?
The history of this, again, because it, you know, when, I went back through there again, and it's like, every lot is developed. Why wasn't this lot, was this originally part of the, the existing property and why wasn't it developed then?
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't do that work. That's the $64,000 question.
Okay, thank you. Can I collect afterwards, or can I?
No.
Any other questions or comments from board members before we open for public comment? Any questions or comments from our professionals? I know we haven't had time to look at this, so I'm not, okay.
I guess just for Michael's one question, we did check the original filed map and there didn't, it didn't really state anything on there as to why this lot was left larger, and it didn't really seem to have any specific restrictions, other than the usual, you know, you need to get health department approval and planning board approval to further subdivide any lot, but it didn't. Other than the drainage easement in the corner, that wasn't really described, there wasn't any real, it's restriction imposed on the lot.
And the subdivision map at that time, that was back in the 80s, I believe, Joe?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, you know, it was a different, it was a different period in time, you know, you didn't have the degree of detail that you have today, for one thing. For example, if you look at the, if you look at the drainage easement that's on there, it looked like someone just drew a pen and just drew a, just a random line. What we're doing is we're defining it very specifically, you know? But back then, they said 40-foot easement, but it's not defined, is it? You know, is it the 40 feet over there or 40 foot here, you know? So here, we've, we've kept the 40-foot in width and in places actually wider. A drainage that's coming in there, we've actually even made it wider, but now we're defining, and then ultimately, part of this whole process will be to prepare a deed that will be deeded to the town, so it'll be very specific.
Originally, both lots were going to be two...
A deed or an easement, I'm sorry.
There will be an easement.
An easement, okay.
Originally, both lots were going to be 2.113 acres in size. Are they still that size, or did the, lot with the original house on it is now, that now smaller?
A little smaller, yeah. Because you're moving the line towards that house.
Okay, we, we really need to see the details.
I know, we're, we're going to.
And I'm sorry, so this was one property once upon a time, when they came through and they, they rolled out the subdivision, that was one property?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
If you look back at the subdivision map, this was divided, then later on, this was divided. This was one big piece. That came later. It was just done different. I don't even know if they were different phases. I don't think they were phases, they were done by, might, might even been different applicants owners.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak for or against the Fecory two-lot subdivision on Kensington Road? Okay. Going once? All right. Ernie, you can come on back up. We need to adjourn you so that we have time to look at the materials you presented. You need to provide to us the buffer detail, how you're going to delineate the buffer for this residence, so we understand that. We need to make sure that's into the planning office with sufficient time for both the board members and our professionals to review it.
So that has to be submitted by the last day of the month? Is that the Thursday, next Thursday?
Right. I, I'm thinking, I'm going to strongly recommend we move this either to August 2 or August 16, with the intent that if there's any questions from our professionals on this map, it gives them time to address them with you, get any revised maps in, so that hopefully we can finish this the next time we see it. So is August 2 or 16 acceptable?
You don't meet in July?
I don't mean July.
Okay. August 2.
August 2, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to August 2? And I'm sorry, before I do, Michelle, Joe, Scott, does that give sufficient time, assuming if we have any questions on the new plan? I know we haven't seen it yet, but any questions? It gives us time to make sure any revisions we have come in 16 days prior to, okay. I know we're in vacation season and things, so. All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn the Fecory two-lot subdivision public hearing to August 2?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is also an adjourned public hearing. This is for Stuart Scott, six-lot subdivision on Warren Farm Road. And do we have the map to put up for the public hearing?
I think it should be on the disk.
It's on the same disk. Okay. Do I have a motion to reopen the Stuart Scott public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, I think the last time we saw this, have you made any changes to the plans or submitted anything new to the board? Okay, we had a letter, I believe, received the day of, of the last adjournment to provide us with some examples of wetland mitigation plans that are being managed by the town. us with some examples of wetland mitigation plans that are being managed by the town. We could find no record of, of that, I believe, I don't know if we've responded formally to that letter yet, but we could find no record of any wetland mitigation plans that the town in the past, present, has going on right now.
I think the letter stated that they were being prepared.
I'm sorry?
I think the letter stated that they were being prepared.
No, I thought it was that they were, they were referenced, like, go read this and you'll understand. Because I kept saying, I can't imagine.
They were currently being prepared or preparing.
Wow.
Present tense.
No. What I said is, our, our wetland consultant on this was Mike Nowicki, who I think you know. And I was speaking to him about the issue that the, the board had concern about. And he says, geez, he says, I'm doing two projects in the town. One is completed, okay? And he mentioned four corners and, did Hopewell Hamlet? I think it's the, it's the one right behind the Hamlet area.
Hopewell Glen.
Okay. Hopewell Glen. And he says that he's doing these annual reports. So I think the board says, we had, we've never heard about it. I think the consultant said they've never heard about it. So after the meeting, I asked them again, and I mean, that's what he said to me, so.
So did you ask him for copies or what the nature of the mitigation was? Because, Michelle, I'll let you speak for yourself, but I believe Michelle's reviewed our, our records and our resolutions and plans for both of those projects. Michelle, if you want to.
Yeah, I looked at the resolution and there was no requirement that that be done within the resolution, so if he was doing it, it may have been.
Well, it might have been, it might have been a condition of the permit, too. I mean, I, I didn't research it. I'm just saying, my whole, my whole point was, this is not something new, it's something that was done. That's all, that was my only point. I'm taking, I mean.
Yeah, but you're saying it was something done based on Mike's representation for projects that, to our knowledge, don't require such mitigation.
Well, he's, he says it's very similar.
I think you should bring him to the meeting. I mean, let's close this until you bring him here and let's ask him face to face if you don't want to bring him here.
Ernie, let me, let me reiterate. I mean, I have no idea what this thing is going to look like and what we're passing on to this homeowner. That's what I asked her the last time. Okay? And you said, go, go read these things, and there's nothing we could find.
Okay. I mean, I, I will try to attempt to get those. I mean, first of all, it's.
As far as we're concerned, they don't exist until you can provide them.
All right. And the other thing, too, I mean, the client's going to have to, whoever that person is that Mike's working with, he's going to have to agree to release those.
That's your burden.
I know that.
But again, from the town's perspective, we're not currently, to our knowledge, and again, we've looked, we even looked for, at other projects to see if we could find something similar. We were not able to find anything similar, both in the past or were presently being done. So again, if he's doing something right now, it's just not something the town is aware of.
Like I said, I, I will talk to him again, I'll see what I can get.
Okay.
I, I have no reason to believe that he's just telling me something to tell me something. And all's I can say.
We're not suggesting that either. Our, our problem is that we can't review it if we don't have it in our records.
But it's a condition, it's probably a condition of that permit, so I'm going to have to get, first of all, permission from him to either get that information. You know, you're saying the burden's on me. If that were, if that were one of my clients, they may not want to release that to someone else. I'm just saying, that's a possibility, but I will do what I can do.
You can certainly foil us and go through all our records for all our projects and see if you can find such a thing.
I'm sure if you went through it, it's not there, but I'm, I'm getting to believe now this is something that was a condition of the permit between the permuty and the core.
Michelle, are the, are the permits public? Would we be able to see that or would we?
I think you can, you can foil the information. I mean, and it's, it is possible that there was not part of our secret record, which is, which is why we're trying to get applicants to make sure that we're CC'd on every document that comes in. It's possible that they worked outside of the town and got a permit and that we never saw a copy of that permit with that condition. Okay?
And just, just so we all understand each other and what I'm asking is, like, how frequently do they come out? Do they visit this thing? What are the conditions if court it fails in terms of, you know, the, the new vegetation doesn't take root? You know, what happens then? Who, who really has the ball to go off and hire people to bring them in and get it fixed and do all those remediations? Because we've never done anything like this and we have no idea what we're talking about.
We don't know how big the bill is for the potential homeowner.
Yeah.
I did, I did do some research on some of the projects that my previous company had worked on that were wetland mitigation projects. And typically, what happens is the permitting agency will require some sort of mitigation plan. That's a report and it says exactly what you're going to do, what plants are going to be planted and, you know, how often you're going to visit and all that kind of, I mean, it's detailed, it's very detailed. And I actually have a copy of one done for a project in upstate New York that I can send around, basically a mitigation plan and a promise to the Army Corps of what they're going to do at a particular site. So I can send that to you so you can at least see that.
Okay.
But I did ask, and one of the projects that the gentleman that I spoke with worked on, it was, again, in a common, it was a homeowners association stormwater wetland and they were, you know, having to monitor it for five years during construction and then I think maybe it might have gone into after construction for a couple of years. But they did end up having to pull the bond on, on the developer because they didn't, they did, I think, about two, paid for about two years and then they, they did not pay for it anymore, so they had to pull the bond.
How big was the wetland and how big was the bond?
It was not, I don't know how to describe, I can get that information for you.
How big was the bond?
I don't know.
I mean, what does it cost to reseed a, a wetland?
Well, I think it depends on what vegetation they're putting in and also depends on how well the vegetation takes and if they have to do any, if they have to actually get rid of the fragmites or whatever else might be in there first to before they plant, which I'm, which they would have to do in this case.
And the bond was with the developer, not the homeowner?
Correct. Yeah, it was, it was a common property. It was not a, it was not individual lot.
Right.
We'll get to that.
There's another issue I wanted to just kind of bring up again, and that is, did we ever get to the bottom of the fill? Like, what, how much fill was put in, over what periods? I mean, I was out there this weekend and I looked at those piles again, and they looked like they were just one-time events, that they just, they got dropped there. And it was my understanding that there was like, there was like, the way the process works is you allow gradual fill over like X amount of time and, you know, so do we have any idea like how much fill is in there now and how that compares to the time elapsed? And are there any records of?
I don't, I can't speak to when it was done, whether it was done at one time, whether it was done over a period of a month or whether it was done over a period of two years. One thing I can say is part of our response to the town is we made calculations, because we've done topo in the area, so we're able to do calculations. And I think there was kind of a time set by looking at some Google Maps or something like that. Joe and I kind of went back and forth on this. And it would appear that yes, fill was brought in, but if you look over the period of time that it was done, that it probably would comply with the, with the law. Because you are allowed to bring in X amount of, I think it's tons per year or yards per year.
It's yards per year per lot.
Per lot. So there were two lots.
And he did, as a result of our comments, he did include some volumes in the map, so I was just going to try to look at those.
Okay.
But he did give us some details and broke it down, like the proposed fill. Another, another, there are some notes here. The amount of fill already brought onto the property, 1,777 cubic yards. When you divide that by 375 yards per year, it breaks down to 4.7 years. And they, based on some aerial mapping, I think Michelle was looking at that as well, seemed like it was taken in over a period of at least five years. So between all those things, and then he, and then he's got it broken into different lots. And when, when you consider all those.
Joe, can we clarify though, because I thought, and maybe I'm mistaken, is, is the, is the bottom lot land hooked to the, to the upper lot across Bird's Path? Or are they, is that the two separate existing lots?
There's two, two lots that are, that are separated by the.
So was, was that fill for the one, one lot? Or was that fill brought to both lots?
It was total. It was looked at as a total and then broken down by year.
Thank you.
And then he also has it broken out into lots excluding the fill, any fill to be used for his septic, because that's also excluded from the land contouring.
That would only be for the septic, for one septic pad, not for six, right?
And I would think that only would apply if it was an approved septic pad. Our code applies.
Not even just that if it's an approved building lot?
No, but if you, that, I believe applies to if you have an approved plan for an approved septic pad, then that septic pad is exempt. If that's an approved plan for an approved septic pad. So if these pads were brought in without any prior approval, then they would not be exempt. That's my take on it.
Okay.
But there's no records of any of the fill going, should there have been any?
And then was the fill evenly divided between the two lots?
I realize it was a different time, but.
It was more on one than the others, so one was a violation.
375, that's nothing required.
Right.
Okay.
Well, the fill was, you can see very clearly, and I, and I can get, the fill was brought in and done in pads, so when you see an aerial photograph, you can see several.
No, I know, but I mean, even if it was brought in at 375 cubic yards a year or whatever the rule is, there's more fill on one lot than the other.
Mm-hmm.
So one lot exceeded the 375 per year.
Right. But it was, I think it was clear with, that the fill was already basically placed in the hopes of getting the number of lots, that, that's what I'm saying.
Question is, over what period of time?
It was over probably several, I think we, we went back to a bunch of historic aerials and we tried to figure it out and it was, I can go back and look because I have it in my notes.
So, so let me go back and say, I mean, in the professional's mind, is the issue of this fill closed? I mean, that's one thing I've always kind of emerged from this with lingering questions about, was this, is that on the up and up? That, is it, is there even a pathway that this was done?
Well, I think what we're all struggling with at this point is, I think the applicant's trying to convince the board that you should adopt a negative declaration of the SEQA based on the information. And, and that's a burden that the applicant has to show the board that there's not going to be any impact that's not mitigated by what's proposed. And I think, month after month that this has been on, there are several different factors that seems to be troubling the board in being able to reach that conclusion. And I think the fill is one of them. I think the, the issue of creating a new wetlands that has to then be maintained for another agency satisfaction is a struggle. I think there are other issues with respect that it's just a smidgen on your calculations under the SWIP requirements. And I think it goes on and on, and I think all of those is, my sense is.
The SWIP for the permit requirement for disturbance?
If they exceed the five acres, it triggers the full SWIP.
Yeah.
But doesn't also trigger permitting, separate permitting or no?
Well, that's a full SWIP, yeah.
Okay.
So in any event, I think that the struggle the board's having is this plan doesn't seem to be giving them that feeling that a negative deck is, is maybe appropriate. Maybe there has to be a little further review about some of these issues and impacts that are being created.
Well, quite frankly, I thought the fill issue was put to bed. I mean, this is the first time I've heard about it in a number of months. I mean, we were asked, the issue was raised, we did, we provided, the burden was put on us, we provided a support, a response. I, this is the first time I've heard about it in probably easily four months, five months, maybe longer.
Okay, well, I apologize that I bring it up repeatedly, but.
Well, I think until there's a vote, nothing is completely concluded, is it?
Let me just ask the professionals again, is there a pathway where this could have been done in accordance with the laws at the time?
Sure. I think, I think what they went through is, in theory, if, if he took a five-year period of time, in theory, he could have been in compliance with the.
Right.
Requirement for the 375 per year, provided he didn't, you know, place it in a wetland. You know, that's a whole another story. You know, what existed before he placed the fill.
Okay. And I apologize, while I have seen the, the drawings and looked at those, I did not catch the, the discussion of the fill at the bottom, so.
But if we could just go to one other item, and that would be the disturbance. I know specifically, Ernie, we've talked a couple times now about certain representations on the plan as far as accessing wells and toes of slope, et cetera. And right now, you're at 4.92 acres. And in the last plan I've seen, I have not seen any adjustments, as we've discussed, for access wells, et cetera. So in, in my professional opinion, what you've represented on a plan is not feasible. And I don't think we should go any further until that, those adjustments are made. And if you're over the five acres, you're over the five acres.
Do you, do you have a, do you feel that the 4.92 is not correct?
Based on your representation that you can get a well rig down a five-foot path.
So you're speaking of the one well, that's the issue?
No, multiple, you have, you have multiple little offshoots for footing drains, well lines, et cetera, that are five feet wide. And I don't know how you get machines, I don't know how you get well rigs, et cetera, down those narrow paths. I don't believe it's feasible. I know it's not feasible, so I've asked you twice now to make those adjustments, we need to see those adjustments.
All right, so we can have, I mean, we can have movable pads. I mean, that's one thing that we.
I'm not going to police movable pads. We're going to follow conventional methods. If the well pump guy's got to go back five years from now and pull a well pump, he's not putting pads out there. So it's, you know, it's access, regular, normal access.
You're saying that alternative is not acceptable?
Not acceptable. We're not going to police that, Ernie. We're not going to police that when the well rig shows up, he's bringing pads with him. We're not going to police that. I can't think of one project, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we've accepted that.
Okay. All right, so as I see it, there's the three issue, disturbance, the fill, still, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, well, possibly.
I mean, is this, is this. You've looked at the maps and historically. Is this an active issue or not? It could have happened over a period of at least five years, right?
Yes.
And the calculation says that they, it would have taken 4.7 years if they went right to the limit.
But you have to understand that it's, it's very difficult to estimate based on an aerial photograph, the amount of fill that was actually brought in at any time.
Did two-foot of fill come in or did five-foot of fill come in? Because you got to get to that level of detail. I don't think from aerial photographs you can get there, so.
No, but.
Possibly it was conformance and possibly it wasn't.
Let me ask you a question. What, what, do you have any idea what years that stuff was put there?
I wasn't involved, the owner did it on his own.
I mean, if he's got bills or records showing the trucking and when it was delivered, maybe that's a way to track it down.
I mean, I agree, we can't prove that any one year didn't go over, but I thought what I was hearing was, it looks like it was done over a period of time of at least five years, such that it could have been.
Well, and I think also the, it's also difficult because we don't have aerials for every single year. You know, they skip years, so it's really difficult to know exactly how much. But I have, I do have, I did have somebody in my office a long while ago look into the aerials and I believe, and I can try to go back into my files and find the memo that he wrote where he described what he was able to find.
Okay.
But Michelle, at the time, you're not recalling that there was any specific violation of the town law that was easily documented or anything like that, is that correct?
Not that, not that we could prove at any time and also, I mean, again, not knowing where the wetlands were, whether or not there was fill put in wetlands or how much fill was brought in at any given time. There's no way you can.
But even if you discount all of that, there's more fill on one lot than the other, so the one lot is in excess of what would have been allowed over that time period.
And you've made a million dollar question.
What if it was 10 years, what if it was 10 years and not five years, Tom? I mean, I.
Using it as two lots and at 375, but one lot has lesser amount and the other lot has a greater amount.
Would permitting or records have been required for any of that period?
No. The ordinance says that you can bring in up to 375 cubic yards. I'm not good at the, and, but the, the intent is that it's for landscaping, et cetera. It's unclear, but the intent seems to have been on a developed lot to bring it in for landscaping purposes like that.
Okay. Then I guess, if there is a plausible route for this, then I would withdraw the issue. If there is a plausible route.
Maybe something, I mean, Michelle and I, we can double-check how we came up with the numbers on it and report back to you.
But in the absence of something specific, yes, there is a plausible route.
Okay.
So I think, again, it's an imprecise science, and we err on the side of the applicant when we look at something like that.
Okay.
So is that issue, is that off the table or on the table still?
What I'm gonna say is, as Joe just mentioned, he and Michelle will take one last look at it, and if there is any issue or any question, they'll reach out to you and let you know within the next few days.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Yeah. And by the way, to answer your question, why is this- it's because I was out there this weekend, that's why.
I'm sorry?
I was out there this weekend. That's where this came from, out of quote nowhere. I was just looking at those piles again and thinking, there's a lot of dirt there.
Yeah, I've been out a couple times looking at it. Okay.
Well, I'll also add this, you know, part of this plan, those piles that were put there are gonna be mitigated. They're gonna be taken, and they're gonna be moved into the new- Some are within septic areas, others are not. The ones that are not, they're gonna go on to where they belong. So we're gonna clean- you know, it's gonna be cleaned up. So I think when it's done, it'll be done properly.
Okay. And I'm sorry, where you're planning to move soils, is that all included in your disturbance plan? Just to make sure, because to Scott's point, we wanna make sure that if you're gonna need to move dirt around, that's usually larger equipment. So just, let's make sure the pathways, if you're doing that, are all delineated like he's talking about. Any other questions or comments from board members or our professionals before we open for public comment? Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against the Stuart Scott six-lot subdivision on Warren Farms Road, going once? Okay. So, Ernie, it sounds like we still have a couple things we need to work through. Michelle and Joe, you will take one last look at the fill. Absent any specific issue, we'll assume that will be closed out. With regard, I think, to the wetland permitting, sorry, wetland permitting, the wetland mitigation and ongoing maintenance, is there anything else that we need from the applicant to determine what the town's comfort level is for this? I don't think so. Okay. Well, because I know we left off with, there were some references in the letter we weren't able to trace through, but I think, Michelle, you were able to find the projects. Ernie, it's on you if you want your professional to bring additional information to us or provide more specifics for the town to understand.
It should also be noted, both of the projects that he cited, they're still ongoing developments, and the original developer's still there. So they were, even if-
I think, and just to clarify, I think that two projects cited in the letter were not the projects that we feel the applicant intended, so-
If we clean up the letters to reference Four Corners and Hopewell Glen, both of those developments are still ongoing with the developer on site.
Absolutely, and will be for a number of years.
Which is far different than a six-lot subdivision that's gonna be here and there.
Well, the entire area is on one lot, so we'd have to get comfortable that that one lot owner could ultimately bear the responsibility.
Right. But I'm not sure we need, again, unless the applicant wants to provide additional information to us about these other projects, or is able to provide, like, the sample reports or what that looks like, I think we probably have enough information in our record to make that call. So the final thing that's out there, Ernie, that is something that's needed from you, to Scott's point, is some more reasonableness to the limits of disturbance. So if there's areas you can pull back to make the travel ways a little bit wider, we need to make sure that you're staying under that five acres. I'd like to be easily under the five acres, because I think we know, in a construction project like this, that it's not unusual for somebody to disturb an area that maybe was unintended. So if you can reorganize it a little bit, to Scott's point, and make sure the travel ways are clear, I think that makes sense.
Or is there some alternate design or layout that might be considered that would lessen these particular concerns? Certainly, that's an option that the applicant would have to propose to the board also.
Okay. And Scott, is there a minimum recommended travel way? Or does it just depend on the equipment that will be needed for each of the improvements?
Well, I think if he showed 10 feet, I wouldn't argue with that. I mean, it's tight. But I wouldn't make an argument of that. But I would also add that, I think, where he's showing his disturbance also needs to have the proper topography of what kind of grading might be required. Because even though you might fit 10 feet at the top, you know, if it's, say, a four-foot fill, it could be 18-foot wide at the bottom. So I think to really evaluate that, you know, he should be clear on the topography that's associated with it, or the proposed grading associated with it.
And I think you said you're including any movement of the fill pad you're including in your limits of disturbance, unless it's part of the SDS, right?
Yeah, I think there's one area that's kinda out there as an island that, again, again, needs to show a route to get to it, to remove it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? Ernie, how much time do you need to relook at the limits of disturbance and identify anything additional you want to provide to us with regard to the wetland mitigation?
I could be back on August 2nd.
August 2nd? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn Stuart Scott to August 2nd?
So moved.
Second.
And I have a second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. That was the last item on our agenda tonight, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
One other letter that was delivered today. We just-
I'm sorry, Tom.
There was a letter that the board received today. What happened is, New York State changed the law with respect to fireworks. And if a county opts into the state option, then the person who sells sparklers is exempt from any local licensing. So we did have an application several weeks ago from a company that wishes to do a temporary tent at the Acme Center, Unity Plaza. And they got off the track here. They were being directed towards applying for a peddler's permit. And in fact, under the amendment of the last year to the penal law, they are licensed by the state to sell sparklers. And as such, we are prohibited from imposing any other licensing requirements upon them or to charge them any fee for the sales of it. So they don't need a peddler's permit, because originally, the thought was they would need a peddler's permit and then come before you as a stationary peddler, that oxymoron that we deal with once a year for one vendor in the town. So since that only- the issue only got resolved late last week, the attorney did submit a packet to the board this evening. And it's very simply, between now and July 5th, it would be to erect a temporary tent at Unity Plaza behind Maupac Bank. It's the area that's somewhat visited every now and then by those yellow dumpsters, clothes bins that are not allowed. And they are removed at this time. There is the consent of the property owner attached. And so it's just to run by the planning board, the fact that this would be a temporary, short-term sales location.
Does this require a motion by the planning board, or is this just-
That would be helpful to have that in the record. Excuse me?
Are they only selling sparklers?
Sparklers. That's all they're licensed to sell.
And when you- when-
Dutchess County opted into-
When it says sparkling devices, though, isn't that also the things that are like fountains? It's not just the little things you hold in your hand?
Yeah, whatever is-
But it's not firecrackers.
Sparkling devices.
It's nothing actually explosive. It's stuff that's stationed.
Well, let me put it this way. They're only allowed to sell what's defined as sparkling devices. So if the town police or the state police determine they're selling something other than what they're licensed for, that's a separate problem for them.
But the state does permit more than just the handheld sparkler that you're picturing. It's a little more than that.
Do you plan on selling more fireworks going into church or coming out of church?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this your- is this your- oh, come on up to our- I apologize. I'm sorry. I didn't know you were here. Come on up.
Oh.
Thank you.
Oh, you're with- oh, I'm sorry.
Carol told me to come, and I was in the area kinda doing my world tour of zoning meetings tonight. Okay.
I wanna repeat the question. Are you gonna sell more fireworks to people going into church or coming out of church?
It's actually- You do not need to answer that question. That is a rhetorical question.
How our program actually works is, it's nonprofit fundraisers. So the individual, we set them up for business, and they're selling TNT product, and we get them licensed, and we lease the property. The person there is actually a high school teacher out of the Reinbeck High School who's doing this to raise funds for kids that don't have parents and can't go to prom. So last year, he raised $4,000 doing something else. So now, a bunch of parents got together, and this is what they're doing this fundraiser for. So it's gonna be in that parking lot, you said. It's ground-based sparklers and sparkling devices, fountains. Nothing goes in the air, nothing explodes, no bottle rockets, wood and sparkler. So it's everything of what the state law allows. We already have our state permits for that location. There's a local vendor that is putting up that tent, which they were going to be set to do tomorrow. But then we figured out this little snafu in the middle, which we're trying to take care of.
Okay.
But we abide by NFPA 1124. We have our fire extinguishers, exit signs, no smoking signs. Pretty much everything the state law abides. We operate out of 48 states, and I put up about 7,000 tents in two weeks. So I apologize for my appearance right now.
And I apologize. We didn't catch your name for our minutes.
It's Melissa Gudude, and I'm from Long Island City.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay.
If you have any other questions, let me know.
So, motion to allow a sales tent in the middle of Unity Plaza?
I wanna clarify with Tom. Are we taking a motion to allow a peddler's permit, although a formal application?
You're just allowing the temporary tent to be erected.
Temporary tent, okay.
It'd be subject to, and the tent company will notice, whether they need a permit from the building of the building or not. Because state law requires tents over certain sizes you need a permit for. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
I'm staying in the area tonight, so I can come back tomorrow morning and figure out with-
Downstairs and then-
Yeah, with the building department if we get a tent. Every town has been very, very different with what we need, so-
I'm not shocked.
It's been very, very, very different. So some have no building permit. So if there's a building permit for a tent here, I can apply for that tomorrow morning and get that before everything goes up.
So, Michael, did you wanna make a motion to allow a temporary tent?
Make a motion to allow a temporary tent for the sale of fireworks, middle of Unity Plaza?
Sparkling devices.
Thank you.
Sparkling devices, not fireworks, subject to any permitting required through the building department.
What she said.
And I'll second it.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, you're all set. Thank you very much. Sorry to make you wait so long.
Which devices are allowed?
Okay.
I'm glad you saw it.
Okay, so I think that, Tom, was the last-
Edit anymore? Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy your first day of summer, remainder of the evening.